I can get your attention. Before we start our meeting, we're going to get up and do the plan. I'll be late by the river. I elevated you. It's a big grand show tonight, and Reverend Brian Powell is going to give our invocation. So with that, let's all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God of the citizens, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Brian, how are you tonight?
I'm good. How are you? Apologize for missing this afternoon. I got caught up at a funeral and forgot to call the office.
I don't know what Mr. Schomel did, but...
We had Dennis here.
Well, we had Dennis.
Deputy police chief.
Well, I want to apologize anyway, so thank you. Let's go to God in prayer. Father God, I want to thank you for another day of life. You bless us with God and the opportunity we have to go to our jobs and attend to our responsibilities, Lord. We thank you for the community in the city of Connersville, Lord, and the opportunity we have to live here and serve here and raise our families here, God. I thank you for these men and women who have given up their time to serve this community, to make it a great place to live, God. And I pray as they meet here tonight, Lord, I pray you'll give them wisdom. I pray you'll be with them, Lord, and help them to make wise, good decisions to continue to make this a great place to live. I pray you'll bless and be with their families as they're away from them tonight, as well as when they go home, to be with them again this evening. God, we thank you for all the good things you do for us. God, thank you most greatly with Jesus Christ and our hope in him. Again, Lord, we ask your blessing and presence upon this meeting. We pray in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Before we start our meeting tonight, Brian, I'd like for you to hear this.
Yes, sir.
I received a letter today from the group that was going to defend us when we were threatened about praying. And I received a letter from them today, and they sent me the entire document that the Supreme Court has just ruled on. And not only do we have the right to pray at our meetings, whoever prays has the right to pray in any direction they want to. He can say Jesus Christ. He can say anything he wants to. Before they were limited, we had to only mention God, being just a uniformed God. And they ruled on the whole thing, and I've got about six pages of the ruling. I think it was a great thing. We also have the right to have religious holidays inside this building. We can celebrate Christmas, and we can celebrate, I believe it says Thanksgiving. So the Supreme Court has really given us some leeway. With that, I think that's a good thing, and I think the Supreme Court did the right thing.
Did they say anything about outside nativity scenes and that kind of thing?
No, that was not part of the suit.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did they say anything about Dr. Weber eating a sucker during a meeting?
They didn't mention that, but I'll check.
It's a spiritual thing, isn't it? Put it away then.
I'll call our meeting to order tonight, and the first order of business will be roll call.
Councilwoman Rish, present. Councilman Weber?
Present.
Councilman Schomel?
Present.
Councilman Nobby?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creech?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Let the record show, we have six council people present. We have a forum, and we can do business. I'd like to welcome all five of you here tonight. Appreciate you coming. And this is going to be a short meeting because we've got a real short agenda. This being our regular meeting, we'll have a reading for minutes of the last meeting, May 19th.
I move to accept them.
Second.
A motion to accept the minutes as they were sent out, May 19th. Are there any additions or corrections? Not appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Under new business, we have the resolution, police reimbursement, receiving $417.97 back on telephone, and I think that was because of cell phones, wasn't it?
It's police cell phone.
Yeah. It was... What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to accept Resolution 2014-22.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept Resolution 2014-22, receiving reimbursement for $17.95 from the telephone company. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item E, we have opinion ordinance 3120. This is a handicap sign. Order Works approved it and recommended to us. And I thought I had the address in here. You did?
I did.
321, 12.
Well, I can't... 321...
12.
Yeah? Yeah. David has looked at it, and we've got a doctor's excuse. Everything's in line, and the Board of Works has recommended. Your Honor?
Yes. I see where Dr. Kapor has recommended this. I would like to make a motion. We pass this.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt pending ordinance 3120 on first reading, on a motion for a handicap parking place. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to suspend the rules and move forward?
Remove.
Second.
On suspension of rules only, considering pending ordinance 3120 for this handicap parking sign, on suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward if you like.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we consider pending ordinance 3120 on third and final reading, a handicap parking sign. Any discussion? Not appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Pending ordinance 3119, this is an additional appropriation from the Edit Fund, $112,237.97. That's 90 cents. That's pretty important if we pay the park pool. Would they repossess that?
They'd take it to water.
They could take it to water.
Water bombs does. Take the slides.
I don't have a copy of that ordinance. Does anyone have a copy?
It's on the same...
You don't have it in your fashion? I don't either.
It wasn't in my pocket.
I don't either.
And I didn't have the one we just acted on either.
That was laying up here.
I will reprimand her in the morning. Do you want her fired?
Just depend.
It isn't in there like that? Are they stuck together?
No, I was missing some things on my...
I see. Yeah.
One was on like up here.
Okay, well, anyway.
Here's what Gary had.
Where did you find them? No, one was on my desk.
Okay.
That one should have been.
Yes.
Mine were stuck together.
Pending ordinance 3120 and 3119.
Yeah. 3119 is the pool payment, $112,237.97.
And we're setting the public hearing date for two weeks.
Yes.
No, this is the public hearing. We've already advertised.
Let's open the public hearing with all five of you. Anybody want to discuss the pool payment? Anybody? Any questions?
Has it been busy?
Huh? Oh, has it been busy?
It's really done. Good.
Anybody want to discuss the pool payment? Not appearing. I'm opposed to public hearing. Open to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve pending ordinance 3119.
Second. Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3119 on first reading, switching $112,237.97 from the Edit Fund to the Park Pool Fund. Any discussion?
Do we have this much money in Edit?
Yes.
Does it come from the county?
No, we don't, not yet.
But we will have.
Yes, we are due to get half of the $108,000 that they have promised us out of Edit money. Should be in this week or next week.
How much?
We get a total of $108,685 a year.
So we make up $4,000 somewhere along the way.
We had a balance of $55,475 in there from last year.
Remember, we didn't spend that on the...
We didn't give all that money to EDG last year.
Okay.
Hate to say it, but remember I told you, so we need to hold some back.
And this is... This and something else is the only thing that Edit can use. That's all right.
Excellent. And then we're going to be short the next payment, right?
Mm-hmm.
How much we're going to be short?
We're short... Our payment for the pool?
Yeah, how much we'll be short?
We'll be short the same amount, $3,552.
Providing that they continue to give us some.
Well, we made two payments.
Yeah, but I mean, next year, they may not give us that much.
Wait and see.
They're supposed to, because it's an Edit project. What's your pleasure on it, gentlemen, ladies?
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second on first reading on pending ordinance 3119. Any further discussion? You want a roll call vote, or you...
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final?
So moved.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance 3119 on third and final reading, on suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We can move ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3119 on third and final reading, which would take $112,237.97 on the Edit Fund and pay the park pool payment. Any discussion? Not appearing. Roll call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
You have passed that on third and final reading. Do you want to take the fee raises on the EMS tonight, John?
I think we can.
I don't know that you have that in your packet. I don't...
It's on the desk.
Okay, you put it there. You understand what that is?
Yep.
We agreed to that last time. We're catching up here, the insurance payments. If you're okay with that, we'll let you consider it. Pending ordinance 3121, this ordinance would make the fee payments for the EMS equal to what the average insurance cost is, or the insurance payment is, excuse me. What's your pleasure?
I take the motion to accept pending ordinance 3121.
Second.
Motion to accept pending ordinance 3121 on first reading. Any discussion? Now a roll call vote.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
You have passed that on first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules and move forward?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules, so we can consider pending ordinance 3121 on third and final reading, on suspension of rules only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You can move forward if you like.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance 3121, which would raise the or increase the fees at the EMS charges equal to the average insurance cost or insurance payments. And any discussion? Not appearing. Roll call vote.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creech?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Schomel?
Yes.
We have passed that on third and final reading. That takes care of that. Anybody have anything on their old business?
Where are we at with that trail to the North End?
Well, we've been working on it. We had one meeting about two weeks ago, and John has the answer. Where are we on the trail to the North End?
I've been talking to Jane at the abstract company, and she's researching that now. She had gotten away from it, but she's back on it.
Since we got a quitclaim deed, quitclaim deed, can't we go ahead and act on that?
No. Problem is, the quitclaim deed only conveys what, if anything, the state owned. And the railroad owned some land in fees, some land what they'd only had right of. And the law is that if you give up the use for which the right of was given, and it reverts then back to the adjoining landlord. So it's very possible a lot of that now owned by adjoining landlords.
But there's a portion of it that runs through there that is city-owned, isn't there? Like an alley or something?
That's in Beesons.
Yeah.
Yeah. A relatively small portion of it, yeah.
So that could be...
Well, like I said, there's an alley that's adjacent to the right of.
So that could be cleaned up today if we wanted to.
It's... The alley is never been closed, as far as I know. So it's... Even though it's not improved, hasn't ever been used, as far as I know. It's still a city right of.
And then with the quitclaim deed, we just sold that host house on the quitclaim deed.
Yeah, we can do that.
But then...
You sell whatever interest you own, if any.
And then that now, since we sold it, now the historical side, it can act on it, correct?
Yeah.
So why can't we act on the railroad property?
Because they knew we didn't just have an easement. Don't you see the difficulty? If what they passed on to us is nothing more than easements, the easements have a long since reverted to the adjoining property owners because it's no longer being used for a railroad.
So their interests might all be the easement?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it. That's it. See, and they can have a varied interest. Some could be face simple, some... But you'll probably find most of it's easement. That's the common way for railroads that have been developed in the later years, early on, way back during the war. For the Civil War, they were giving land grants, but that's kind of gone with the wayside.
Okay.
Any other old business? Okay. Tom?
I have something. This is not really business, but I would just like to say hello to my girlfriend. I just got one. I haven't had one in years.
You're about to say her name, so we...
Yeah, her name is Carrie, and she's at my house right now with her daughter. And I told her to... I turned on the TV so she would watch, so... And I would just like to say hello. And the entire council is happy.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is that really council business? I mean...
Well, it is for me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
If you get a girlfriend, you can say hello.
My head's a lot clearer now, Fran.
He's probably turned the set off before.
Yeah, but you know, I can read these papers now.
You got the old business, Fran.
I don't think so.
Anybody else got any old business on?
I have mislignings, but that's not...
Mr. Mayor?
I have something I'd like to say.
Go ahead.
Okay. I take this position seriously, and quite frequently, I try to add humor to it. But I have a couple of things I would like. First thing, on serious nature, I would like to congratulate all of the 2014 CHS graduates. Special congratulations to Chandler Creech and Heidi Urban. Secondly, the mayor and Julie gave me the opportunity to provide a heavy trash day last Friday and Saturday for the citizens of Connersville. We had 136 people participate Friday and 88 Saturday. I think it was very successful, and thank you.
Do you know how many tons you disposed?
I want to say four loads, so around 80 ton.
How would that marry to the heavy trash? When we did it, was it much bigger?
It's hard to compare because when David guys do it, it's over a month.
Yeah.
So it would be...
It was successful, you think?
Absolutely. There can't be a mattress left in Connersville. Can't be.
I picked one up this morning.
Okay. But again, thank you.
You got the city clerk's treasures, Mr. Court, in front of you. If there are any questions, you can ask her, either publicly or privately.
I didn't... Is there any comment or not on the general fund, which is kind of scary? I'm not sure whether...
Actually, Fran?
Yes.
I was pretty pleased with that because we didn't end up having to get the second additional. And that's $452,000 is our balance at the end of May. And I know that's low, but it's low this time anyway, and we only had the one additional of 380-some thousand. So I think everybody's kind of stepped up to the plate. You know, claims have been low.
Yes.
With no overtime costs, and it's made a difference. And I'm pleased that we're where we're at.
When were we...
Debbie assured... The reason I didn't take the second additional, Debbie assured me that they ruled half our tax draws would be ready, hopefully this week.
And do you have any idea what that's going to be?
I have no idea what that... She couldn't tell me that.
Okay, so...
That's really early, so...
In layman's terms, we're maybe...
I think that was pretty lame.
I know, but we ended up maybe $350,000 short of finishing the six months.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
That's just about what we set, isn't it?
Well, I thought that for the year.
Well, we hope to make it up. Now, we're going to get on a fast track and make it up between now and the first year.
So what we receive will have to last us until the end of the year?
Yes.
It'll have to last us till our third week in December anyway. But we got a lot of our big things paid.
You know, when we get our tax draw in December, right away in January, we have all of our agreements. The police department has their big for the computer. All of our maintenance agreements are all due in January. We have all our insurance, our liability, and our workman's comp insurances are all due first, you know. We pay those out in January. Come June and July, we don't have those huge expenditures. We have insurance, but it's a small amount, maybe $40,000 or something.
We'll have a fire truck payment coming.
I think those are all in November, yeah. Fire payment and the trash truck payment.
Those are the biggies.
But Julie, well, I mean, I'm just asking. Our payroll for a month runs...
Oh, more than this.
That's what I'm saying.
$700,000.
Because it sounds like a lot, because I thought it was between $600,000 and $800,000. So that 452...
Well, it wouldn't get us through the month.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it sounds like...
But we do have other income that comes in during the month. It's not like this is all we have, and there wouldn't be anything else. We get our local option money, which is like $130,000.
I guess what I'm saying, we're far from out of the woods, is my point.
Oh, no, we're not out of the woods, but...
But what we're doing is working.
Right. Absolutely.
And we're not laying anybody off.
Right.
And we're not shortchanging the citizens on their services. I mean, you know, we didn't do a big trash pickup. I know that. Sometimes we're a little short with our police officers. We're short sometimes in the fire department. I think we've done pretty good with EMS. We've had pretty full staff most of the time, haven't we? It ain't the best, but we're making it. The point to make here tonight is, we stepped up to the plate. We faced what we had to do, and we're fixing it, or at least we're working with it. I don't know that you can ever fix it. Until we get bigger assets by you, you can't fix it. But we're working with it, and it's working. You watched the money. I know. It's working, isn't it?
Yes. Yes. Yes, our claims for the last two weeks, 98 claims, around $44,000. And sometimes we run over $100,000. So the unnecessary spending that we've stopped is working.
That's what we want to know. We'll deal with it after we get our tax draw. We'll look at it again, and we'll be able to tell you, what do we have to do this next six months? Instead of living payday to payday, we live six months to six months. But you know, I talk to mayors all the time, and it don't make you nervous. When you go to the state of Michigan, the state of Wisconsin, every mayor is the same thing. We've had to stop this. We've had to do this. We've had to do that. Small towns are eliminating police officers at night. Many small towns in some states, and maybe some in Indiana, I don't know about, are turning their policing over to their sheriff's department. They got a deputy drives through once or twice straight tonight. So we still have policemen on duty. We still have firemen on duty. We're still collecting trash. We have a nice pool. We got a good park system. We're trying to maintain it. Our men and our women, that workforce, are working very hard, and we have certainly not replaced anybody that has retired. And we got some retirements coming up in the utility. I don't know that we got any in the city at this point.
No, at this point.
But we certainly won't be replacing anybody. Someone else said they had some miscellaneous business.
I did. Just want to tell you about something that is going on in Fayette County. It's a good thing, and I really wanted to share this because I think it's really exciting. There's a group in town of people around my age that have started a, they call it the Fayette County Neighborhood Day. And basically, what they've done so far is they've done two projects, and they just get people that want to volunteer their time. And they went and cleaned the Fifth Street stairs on either side of that, swept the stairs, and took care of that. And they did this all on their own initiative. And then this past weekend, they went to New Creek Manor and cleaned the whole fence row up there by the New Creek Mansion there. And they got other projects in the works, and I think this is something that's tremendous. Our citizens are saying, hey, this is our town. This is our problem. We need to solve it. And I think that's just great. And I encourage everybody to help with that.
I don't know if that's a same group, but we were working with them. I told them to pile all the stuff on the Fifth Street steps, and we would pick it up. And my man David did it.
Yeah, it's led by Audra and Daryl McGuire, and they just moved back to town recently. They are doing a great job with this. I'm terribly impressed with it. My wife and I helped, and I encourage everybody to go and help do their part. And it's only like three hours on a Saturday.
Every Saturday?
I think... I'm not sure what their plans are in the future. I mean, I just happened to go this past Saturday and heard about the one, the Fifth Street stairs. And I think it's great. I mean, if we as citizens go out and take care of our city, that's much more impactful than the government taking care of our city. So I think that's great, and I encourage everybody to go out and do that.
How do people find out about that?
It's on Facebook. And outside that, I'm not real sure. My wife tells me, but...
It's not a city-sponsored project, because if it was, we'd have to worry about liability insurance. But when we can, like picking up the load of stuff they left on the street on Monday, we can do that. That's not a problem. It's not a city-sponsored project. I have talked to those people, and I'm really glad they're doing that. Somebody asked me about a redevelopment balance. I think it was you gave last meeting, or somebody did. The redevelopment balance with the Fifth Third sold, and I think we got all our bills paid now, is $6,312.49. You might write that down.
Yes, sir. Thursday, I will set the final redevelopment commission.
$6,312. I believe all the bills are paid, and the building's transferred.
Yes, we approved the last one that they had on the Board of Works, the preservation. We transferred some money to...
So that is a really good thing that's taken place. Open House for Wayzetta is this Saturday from 10 until...
2.
2. Yeah, 10 until 10:00 in the morning until 2. There'll be some cookies and punch. There'll be people up there to guide you. It's a good thing. Wayzetta will be on TV program Friday night. I believe it's scheduled for 7 to 8. On Connersville Speaks, we're having a special program. They'll be on there explaining what they're doing, how they're doing it. There's right at 100 people working up there. I've toured it many times, and you'll be really impressed with the building. It's... It looks like a brand-new building inside. And so everybody, I would hope that hears my voice, would try to get up there and tell that company, thanks for coming here. Thanks for creating the jobs, and keep creating more. And we should be very grateful that they're here. I know we get some criticism because we dished the property, but that was the way we were able to get them and to have a small town like us be able to admit a company to come from Minneapolis, Minnesota, and begin building their business here, I think is a great feat. Really proud of it. Anything else under miscellaneous? Go ahead.
I don't know if this is where this fits or not, but I've been asked, and I don't know. When financial institutions foreclose on homes, do they have the same responsibility to keep them mowed and keep the yards that owners have? Or are a lot of these houses that are empty and the yards are going wild, are they belonging to the banks?
Mr. Baker, that's your question.
Yeah, if they foreclose and sold at share of sale and taken title to the property,